Thank you for coming to the school committee's meeting tonight. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. We have a busy week and a busy agenda this month. We're, every night we're somewhere.
I know.
So, this is what, our third Monday in a row?
Second of Monday, yeah.
Fourth.
Fourth Monday in a row.
Yeah, I think so.
Who's counting at this point?
I've become a selectman. Anyway, okay. Comments from the community? Anybody like to address the school committee tonight? See, nobody move on and we'll start with our North High School. Max?
Hello, I have a lot tonight.
Good.
Um, MCAS English Testing will begin on Tuesday, March 21st and go Wednesday, March 22nd into Thursday, March 23rd. The congratulations to the cast, crew and all involved in the amazing Plymouth Public Schools Spring Drama Production of Les Mis. Thank you for dedicating so much of your time to making this show such a huge success. Plymouth is still talking about it. Congratulations to Junior Ariana Bremis for being selected to read at the Poetry Out Loud National Recitation Contest. Ariana recited "Auto Lullaby" by Franz Wright, "Fairy Tale Logic" by A.E. Stallings and "The Affliction of Richard" by Robert Bridges. Class of 2017 Mayfest T-shirts will be on sale during the March of, during the month of March. The shirts can be purchased for $20 with a check or money order made payable to PNHS S.A.F. All seniors are encouraged to apply for the NICE Scholarship. The NICE Scholarship is a $3,000 renewable scholarship and applications are now available in guidance. Seniors may also access the application through their Naviance account under scholarships. And seniors are also encouraged to apply for all other available scholarships and to be checking your Naviance for private scholarships as well. While working on their creative marketing project for DECA, juniors Kayla Shaughnessy and Jocelyn Bailey developed an allergy-friendly menu. The meals were gluten-free, egg-free, peanut-free and dairy-free and are now available to all students that would like that option at lunches. Students are reminded that March closes on Friday, March 31st and we encourage students and families to be checking their Aspen daily for the most updated academic standings. Any questions, please call the guidance office or teachers directly. The Massachusetts DECA State Career Development Conference was held March 9th through 11th in Boston. There were 2,700 competitors from high schools all over Massachusetts who had earned the right to compete by qualifying at the district competitions or by preparing a written project. Plymouth North High School had 73 students at the conference with 32 who qualified for role plays and 42 students who prepared 23 different written events. The results of the competition were announced on Saturday during the grand award ceremony at the Heinz Convention Center. We have 16 international qualifiers who will take a trip to Anaheim in late April. We had six written team event winners, second place in buying and merchandising research event, Morgan Brody, Jimmy Dermis, Mitchell Hennings. Second place entrepreneurship promotion project, Rachel Easter, Taylor Martin and Mallory Klorin. Second place finance operations research, Sidney Gorman and Molly Hogan. Fourth place learn and earn, Brooke Nolan and Katie Cronin. Fourth place creative marketing, hive-free, allergy-free lunches, Jocelyn Bailey and Taylor Shaughnessy. School-based enterprise, Max Tripp and Morgan Brody, plus Kylie Cheeseman and Alexandra Gilmore. And in the role-play events, third place Jonathan Liskoff in the personal finance, financial literacy role-play event. And John also won a second-place medallion for one of his events. In addition to these many winners, we had several students take the stage in the top 10 events. And Brooke Peterson also won a second-place medallion for a role-play in food marketing. Congratulations to Elie Gianni for receiving the Outstanding Young Advocate of the Year Award during the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Constitute Day at the State House. This award is given in recognition of her leadership in advocating for students who are deaf and hard of hearing. All spring sports began today after school. Families are reminded that the 2017 to 2018 bus application will be sent home with students' report cards on Friday, April 7th. To take advantage of the discounted rate, please pay by the end of the school year. And a bus application must be turned in by all students to identify if the student is a bus rider, walker or a driven to school. Congratulations to Abby Egan for receiving honorable mention at the South Shore Regional Science Fair Competition for her project on "The Myths of Multitasking." To Plymouth North Student Council E-Board, I attended the annual Massachusetts Association of Student Council State Conference in Hyannis. The theme of this year's conference was building a better leader and there were over 1,000 students from all parts of Massachusetts in attendance. Plymouth North brought along six students who attended leadership development workshops, listened to keynote speakers and swapped ideas with other student councils, giving them an abundance of new knowledge and skills to bring back to their school. Students attended a formal dinner dance as well and voted for state student council representatives for next year's school year. On Wednesday, March 15th through Saturday, March 18th, 18 Plymouth North High School students attended the National High School Model United Nations Conference held in New York City. Students represented the country of Egypt and discussed international topics ranging from social and humanitarian to political and financial. The students were engaged in the process of discussing and debating issues in an effort to reach a formal resolution as a body of nations. Parliamentary procedure was used as students role-played the positions that the representatives from Egypt would take in the actual United Nations. There were over 3,000 high school students in attendance from all over the country and the world. Sophomore Jacob Grant was honored to address the entire conference in the general assembly room on the actual United Nations Building. While not in committees, students visited the 9/11 Memorial Museum as well as eating and shopping in Times Square and docking through Central Park with an advisor. It was both an educational and fun experience for all.
Wow, that was impressive. It's nice to see when we have activity across the board from arts, science, everything. It's very, very good. Glad to hear it. Megan, you want to do South?
Hello. On March 7th, we had our National Honor Society induction. It was a very good night and all the students got to take pictures with their invited guests on a green screen. On March 9th and 10th, we had students go to the state DECA conference. We had five Plymouth South students qualify for the International DECA Conference in Anaheim, California. We had Brianna Johnson, Nicole Malali and Alicia Tabakalian for gold level certification in school-based enterprise. Brianna Lonergan and Alec Maderos got third place in public relations project. We also had several teams placed in the top 10 such as Rebecca Jarman and Sean Spiegel in innovation plan, Michaela Nolan and Joe Hasnasser in finance operations research, and Ella Hanan, Sarah Leary and Alicia Tabakalian in financial literacy promotion. We also had about 15 to 18 students go to the M-E-S-C Student Council Conference. On March 9th, we had a spring sports meet the coaches night and students and athletes receive information on tryouts that actually took place today. We just had spirit week this past week and the themes range from movie characters to teachers to workout clothes to school colors and St. Patty's Day. The 9th and 10th grade honors breakfast was canceled on the 14th due to the snow and will be rescheduled for the 24th at 8:00 a.m. The college planning night was also canceled and the makeup date is to be determined. On the 15th, we had the 11th and 12th grade honors breakfast and Elizabeth Pistto spoke and she was a 2012 graduate speaker and she talked about four things, four high school things that led to success in college. On March 16th, we had the Mr. Plymouth South competition and senior Bobby Colbert was crowned. This past weekend was the musical Les Mis Zara and we had our highest ticket pre-sales for it. And as I said before, spring sports started today and it was very nice to see the students use the new tennis courts and the new track. And that's all.
And the play was excellent. I think all of us have gotten to see it. It was absolutely excellent. You were great in it.
Yeah.
And it was really, really enjoyable. It was like going to Broadway in Plymouth.
I've seen it that way and I would put you guys up against them anytime.
It was very good.
Since we're talking about the play, I mean, we could probably go on for a long time talking about that play. And you said it very well, no, you said it. We bump into people in town as we have yesterday and today. Everybody is still talking about it. Everybody just cannot believe. And many of us have seen Les Mis on Broadway, actually several times. But just a couple, just a quick two behind the scenes. I went to the show on Saturday night with three generations, my son and my grandson and myself. And my son, eighth-grade teacher in this building, taught many of those students and was quite amazed. He didn't think they had that much talent we were talking about in the car. But we bumped into two of the leads this evening at the, one of the gas stations, Talies was there. And my conversation came around this afternoon about, you guys should have celebrated. And you know what he said? We were too tired to celebrate.
Yeah.
Think about that. 14 to 19-year-olds gave everything they had, like an athletic event, everything they had, you know that, left on that stage. There was nothing left. And one final point, I came into the building with a ninth grader and we came in the back door by the athletic fields. And I really expected to see cast members milling around, half in makeup, half in costume. You didn't see anybody. It was so professionally done. You didn't see anything until they came on stage. I mean, it's speechless at this point. And it brings up finally, my final point that we should talk about. One of you folks said last time that it's the last production for the two schools together. And I was talking with the chairman of the Board of Selectmen during the two acts on Saturday night and he asked me the question, why do we have to do that? And I don't know the answer to that question.
It's a good point. I mean, obviously it's just that they'll both have their own facilities now.
I think part of it was to give more kids opportunities for, I mean, when you look at the talent on that stage, any one of those kids could have been a lead role in any of those productions. I mean, the talent went so deep on that stage. So I think part of it is that and also expanding it. I think there'd be the likelihood that we could see, you know, even more students participating in that. So it's a good discussion though, it's a good thing.
I think it's a great question because we still have individual shows. But I was talking to one of the musical directors Saturday night and I, we all know the show, I'm sorry, I'll stop in a minute.
No, you're fine.
We all know the show. And I said to him, how did you know you had all those male voices? And he said, when you combine two schools, you'll find all those male voices. That was his answer.
Yeah, I think it weakens the music.
Ms. Badger?
I was talking to a South student to answer your question. It might, I could be completely wrong and you can correct me. But she said that there's been talk of maybe every other year doing, like one at each school and then the other year coming together and doing one. Because she actually missed out, she was in the props, but she didn't actually get to do the show because there was only so many people that they could have. And so she said, you know, PCE really wants that so that we have our individual school production so that, you know, everybody gets that opportunity, everybody who has the talent. But then she said, it's wonderful to come together and so that you get to know people across town in another way. So that's what I've heard.
And Mr. Cable talked to us and we had a big, we talked for like 45 minutes, the whole cast with them and our directors about what we want to see in the future and like tried to get feedback from us from both schools and like what we really want to see in the few, next few years.
Good, good.
Awesome.
Remember North will have a few hundred more seats than South. So that might be a decide, because like it was sold out. I mean, like every seat was filled the other night when I was there.
So just to follow up on that, I know Mr. Cable, we talked about this over the weekend about the future, you know, and it's amazing to see that we're even having this conversation.
Yeah.
Because the program has just gotten so much better and, but it is one of those things that he's going to be, you know, grappling with in the next months to come. So I'm sure you'll hear what's going to happen. He has taken a lot of input from students and he said he did meet with them and again, we'll see what comes of it. But the point is well taken. It is something that's been in the behind the scenes, kind of working on to see what we do.
Perfect. It was excellent.
It's a good problem to have.
Yeah.
It's hard to imagine that eight years, not even, I don't know how many years ago, we did a show every other year.
Yeah.
We didn't even do a show every year.
No.
That's right.
Being a fan and going every year and I know Mrs. Burgess is every performance ever, I think, in the school system.
She's been a few too.
She has seen it grown a girl also, right? So it's amazing. I mean, because it wasn't just the performances, the stage artwork was incredible, the lighting was incredible. I mean, my wife and I like to go to Boston and to New York City to see plays and things and I put the staging up against anything I've seen.
Right. The Les Mis, as you all know, on Broadway, when either, any character was dying, that hot white light. And I was quite impressed and somewhat pleasantly shocked that we had that capability to have that hot white light.
Yeah.
And that's a credit to the town.
That detail.
And I mentioned this to people at the exit of the show I went to. It's very seldom you get a performing arts center. It was built for a production like that. But it very rarely rises to that level where you use all those pieces that it's capable of.
Yeah.
The lights, the sound, I mean, it was well done. Megan, you got to send this back to everybody.
Everybody is telling us.
We're so proud of everybody.
One last thing.
I almost want to ask you for your autograph.
I just have, I mean, I went to the Friday night performance and I thought it was incredible how the, all the cast, if there was like a, so they had a couple of problems with the sound on Friday night. And the way you just went with it and tried to protect your voice as loud as you can to get it back there, it was just, you know, the professionalism of it was just incredible. To just be able to go along and not just like freeze and be like, no one can hear me was great.
Very good. Very, very good. That brings us to old business. Anybody have any updates for old business? I think we're pretty caught up on that.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Yep.
I just wanted to put in a plug for the video piece, the, sorry, I went so quickly. I didn't get to look which one it was, the old business that I'm talking about, the Common Core informational videos. I had mentioned earlier that I loved that reading recovery video that came out. I thought it was really well done and I shared it and lots of people have shared it and I just think it's great. And I was talking to a mother who was saying she saw the video and she'd love to see it like that for math, like how that works for math or, you know, how does she help her kid in math like that? So.
There's an update on reading recovery.
Yeah, it's a good, remember, share that, share that reading recovery video with a lot of people because the funding has been cut.
Yeah.
So it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge for us moving forward, but we're committed to making it happen. But yes, we have, and we've had some conversations recently about how do we promote, you know, a lot of things and use video as much as we possibly can. So certainly that's in the queue with our talented staff to do that, but as well as some of those curriculum videos that you're referring to.
Yeah.
Very good. Anybody have anything else for old business? Okay, new business? Anybody want to bring up any new business? Okay, then we have Dr. Miestis's report.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to give you an update on some happenings in the district over the last week. Last Wednesday night, we had the orientation for students traveling to Japan and it was wonderful to see all those kids so excited and see the chaperones there. But it was, spent about an hour just going over all some logistic issues and preparing them for the trip. We'll have another meeting this Wednesday evening at North High School to continue to give more information on what they're going to need in preparation. So things are well underway. It should be a very exciting time for our kids and the delegation traveling to Japan. A reminder that the school committee on the road, we will be at schools for the next, how many meetings?
Seven.
Three? Three meetings in a row will be on the road. So just make sure you look at the location when you read your agendas so you can, make sure you're there, not here.
Don't come here.
The next one's at Cold Spring?
Nathaniel Morton.
Nathaniel Morton. Nathaniel Morton, then Cold Spring, then Indian Brook.
Well, we won't try to broadcast live, right?
We, I don't know, Brian, what do you think about that? They're going to try.
Oh, we are going to try. Oh, okay.
They don't quit easily.
No pressure. I mean, if it's that big a deal, we could just record it.
Yeah, they'll, if they can get it to go, you know, yeah. It's a little complicated, but they're capable. And just to remind everyone that next year, we're doing school visits. The visits will be archived and shared with the community after the fact.
Right.
So, and we'll advertise those ahead of time so you can plan schedules and so on.
I think that'll be seen by more people. I think that's a better way to get out to your community.
We'll have some data to show if it does or not.
Yeah. Exactly.
Yeah. All right. Plymouth South High School Fields update. We have been going around to the town meeting preview or caucuses, we did two tonight, and just going over that, also going over the budgetary issues for town meeting. I was at the precinct chairs meeting last week, so was Ms. Badger and Mr. Begley, Mr. Costin, Mr. Campbell, Dr. Campbell. And, you know, we're just putting the information out there just so people can be informed and hopefully they can make a sound decision in preparation for town meeting. With that said, we have a video that we'd like to share with you that will be going out to the community. We were going to send it out on Friday. We did some adjusting over the weekend, actually Friday night. And Kristen, could you run that video, please? This is the latest.
The Plymouth South High School building project is approaching completion with an anticipated occupancy date of July 1st, 2017. We now are preparing for Phase 3 of the building project, the construction of multi-use fields B and C. The building projects have reached the cap of 199 million after the construction of Plymouth North High School, the Center for Active Living and Plymouth South High School. Due to inflation and the rise of construction costs, we face a budget deficit that has caused the Plymouth Building Committee to seek alternative funding in order to complete Phase 3 of the project. The initial project scope was budgeted for 4.1 million. However, the school department has prepared a funding mechanism that will reduce the cost by 1 million. The solar power generation plan will fund the installation of necessary solar and lighting equipment for these multi-use fields. In addition, we estimate that we will have 1.3 to 1.6 million in contingency funds available which will be applied to the costs of the fields. As a result of the contingency and solar lighting plan, the overall balance of borrowing is decreased to between 1.5 and 1.8 million dollars. As we prepare to celebrate the fifth anniversary of Plymouth North, we have realized a great deal of activity on the fields at North by our students and Plymouth community. The Plymouth School Committee has worked diligently to reduce facility fees and increase access to turf fields for our community's youth. The funds generated through facilities use are going directly to upkeep, oversight and management. As we move forward with the completion of South High School, we foresee the use of turf fields to be just as beneficial to our community. For more information, visit plymouthedv.com/pshs.
That's excellent.
So we will embed this into our town meeting presentation. We'll do the whole overview of the fields and then we'll let that play at the close and then we'll answer questions of town meeting, but.
Is it possible we could have, I'm sorry?
No, go ahead.
Is it possible that during the lunch break? Depends on when the vote happens. If the vote happens before lunch, never mind. But if the vote's after lunch, is it possible to have some monitors in the lunch so that video is like on a loop?
Sure.
While they're reading in front of it?
Since it is, since it is.
They have a break in the morning too, you know.
And they have a break.
Yeah. Yeah, since it is, I would say that we'll probably make the break but may not make lunch because it's on the special. The special will be heard first.
Yeah, they'll do, okay.
Yeah, so we'll see.
All right.
But.
I'm just trying to cover all bases.
You know, it's, the website, plymouthedv/pshs, there's a lot of information there for the general public on, you know, just what's happening and why we are in the position we are in. So it's moving forward. I did, like I mentioned before, I did have an opportunity to go to the play, but I just, I did want to mention the teachers behind the scenes.
Yes.
Because they were, you know, it, their hard work was very evident on the stage. Dave Grossman, Jason Luciana, who's the choral director and drama teacher at South and in Bonnie Holmes with the, with the band. The hours that those three have put into this, being there side by side with kids is impressive and we're very proud of them and thankful that they continue to be so energized and bring great programming to our, to our schools. And we did have a tour of Plymouth South High School on Saturday and I think everyone is pretty amazed at what has happened since the last tour that we took. State testing begins tomorrow in grade 10 ELA. Parent conferences K through 8, half-day on Wednesday for parents K to 8 because of that. And that's it. I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Begley.
Quick question.
Yes, Dr.
Is there any preliminary on the comprehensive evaluation that was done last week or two weeks ago? Any preliminary findings?
No, we, we don't have any information yet. We had an exit interview and they were very, and they said this before they started, that they will not share anything, give you any indications one way or another of anything that they, that we need to work on or any commendations, recommendations. Apparently, when they have done that in the past and those specific pieces weren't noted in the final report, they've kind of cut themselves in a little bit of a bind. So they just don't give any feedback when they leave. It'll be documented feedback and we'll share that with the committee.
When do we expect to get that?
They said 10 to 12 weeks that we would receive, that the superintendent would receive a draft report.
We have a chance to review it and see what there, if there's any items in there that we want to challenge or whatever, or whatever we can submit.
See if we're doing well and what we can do better.
Absolutely.
Of course, we didn't have any correspondence, did we? And now we're ready for our first program updates. Everybody come on up. Plymouth Early Childhood Center.
Tonight, we have Mary Mello and Dr. Rogers, they're here tonight to present information on our Plymouth Early Childhood Center. Big transition for this program and we had a meeting with Mary this morning on another topic and she is still very, very excited about the move and so I'll turn it over to you, Mary, to begin tonight.
Yes. Good evening and thank you for having me again. Yes, we are so happy at our new center. And, you know, we have so many more opportunities, you know, having everyone together with all of the great big beautiful new rooms. So I have quite a few pictures and things to show you tonight. Okay, so here we go. Our enrollment right now is, we have 106 special needs children and 90 peer models. You know, again, so often I hear this and people in the town are shocked. They don't understand, you know, why we have to have public preschool. Well, the reason is, is that the regulations require that any public school take over educating children with special needs the day they turn three years old. So we have to start when a child is two and a half years old to get all of the evaluations, meet with the parents, because it's imperative that all of the services are in place on the child's third birthday. And let me tell you, the state and the federal government checks on this every other year to make sure we're in compliance. Some of the other services that we have, we have Childfind and that's twice a year. We send out letters, we publish notices in the paper letting all of the doctors, churches, preschools, anyone that might be working with young children to let them know that if anyone has concerns about a child and their development, to call us and we'll make arrangements to do a developmental screening just to see if, you know, everything is developing okay. And if it isn't, then we'll move to a full evaluation so that the child can get some early intervention services. We do evaluations in the area of cognitive development, speech and language, physical therapy, occupational therapy and in vision services. We have mostly integrated preschool programs. This is what the state and federal government has been recommending for years based on the research. Children do learn better and more readily when they're integrated with their typically developing peers. Our regulations say that an integrated classroom is defined by having eight typical Our regulations say that an integrated classroom is defined by having eight typical peers and seven special needs children. We do have a few substantially separate classrooms and those are maximized out at eight students. Here's a picture of one of our integrated preschools. What I'm trying to describe to you and to the community is now that we're in this new center and we're all together with all of the services, you know, I really feel that we've become a very, very comprehensive preschool with comprehensive services. You know, there aren't too many children with any kind of special needs that come in our door that we can't service now. So, we do have the integrated preschool classrooms. We have, here's a sample of our speech therapist. We provide speech therapy in the classroom, so the therapist can be the facilitator and help the child use the skills that they learn in individual speech therapy sessions. We have our occupational therapist. This is an intern that we happen to have right now. They work more with the fine motor skills and sensory development. We have a physical therapist, and this is our new motor room. You can see how large it is. We have, you know, so many, so much space to have a wide range of activities in this room. And this year, we happen to have, you know, an orientation and mobility specialist to service children with, who have visual impairments. They've been doing travel training and I was, I was quite amazed that they start cane and travel training with a three-year-old. But our three-year-old visually impaired students are navigating with their canes from the buses through the classrooms. And you can see at the picture on the right, this young girl, she has found her seat at circle time. And using the peer models, they all know that as she gets close to the rug, they tap her seat and she uses all of the echolocation to find her seat where she can join the other students at circle. We have a teacher for the visually impaired who team teaches with the preschool teacher and we have parallel curriculum going on. The special education teacher, she prepares all of her lessons at least a month in advance and gives them to the teacher of the visually impaired and then she, you know, sets up all of the materials for a parallel curriculum in pre-Braille activities. You can see, you know, we're trying to teach our children who have visually impairments, you know, how to recognize different signs through touch. There's a ball on the left that indicates this is the motor center. And over on the right, you know, I believe it's a math center. And they've learned all of this. There is a touch sign for each of the children in the classroom, so they've learned to identify all of their friends. And even though they can't read Braille yet, for every story at storytime, we have another copy of that book that is in Braille. And our visually impaired children, you know, get to feel, you know, just all of the Braille. They're not reading yet, but we want them to get into that habit of following along. Some of the consultant services that we have, we have a teacher of the deaf who's in the, who's in our wing about once a week consulting to teachers and checking in our children who are deaf and hard of hearing. We have our teacher for visually impairments. We have a board-certified behavior specialist who consults to the teachers if they have any behaviors that they're concerned in the classroom. She will do a, an observation, do a functional behavioral assessment, and then write up a behavior plan for the teacher and help the teacher implement that behavior plan and, you know, change it and monitor it as needed. We also have one staff member who is a registered behavior technician. In the past, we used to call them ABA specialist. She services four classrooms, assisting the BCBA. And I've been talking to you for the past couple of years about our parent education program. We don't have children on Wednesdays anymore in our RASD program because we're providing parent training and home therapy for our students. You know, we've been able to eliminate, you know, the private agencies that we've had to hire in the past to do the home services. In many cases, the parents come to us about four times a year for workshops and then on all of the other Wednesdays, the teachers and the registered behavior technician go to the homes and work with the parents. The new component that we started last year and we expanded this year is the older students, they have six community activities. What our teacher does is she develops what's called a social story. It's a very simple story with pictures telling the child, this is where we're going, this is what we're going to be doing, this is when we're going to end, you're going to go home with mom again, and the day is over. We give these stories to the parents to read a couple of days before the outing and then this way, the children, you know, on the spectrum that have a lot of anxiety about going someplace new or different, you know, have a preview of what's going to happen. And we've developed a wonderful relationship with the children's librarian and we just finished a, you know, a three-week block of taking the children to the library, sitting through a story, and now they all have their own library cards and, you know, picked out a book for the last time. One of our trips was, this was from last year, it was the end of the year, they went to Nelson Park and they went to the mall before the mall opened last Christmas and the Santa Claus agreed to come in early. When our children with autism, they could go into the mall before the mall was busy and noisy and they had the opportunity to meet Santa. And I don't know if you've ever taken your kids to sit on Santa's lap, but look at, they did it. They're happy. You know, these parents finally have pictures of their children smiling on Santa's lap. Okay, and this is my vision of preschool. This is what happens at preschool, developing friendships, learning to negotiate, you know, the classroom, you know, in all of the different areas. Oh, there was one piece missing. I did want to tell you a little bit about our life skills program. I'm always telling you the strength of our program is, you know, our staff. This year, we have a student that we've had for almost two years with a pretty significant disability who is making minimal progress. With absolutely no functional language, even now by the age of five. And this was really, really difficult for the parents not to be able to communicate with their child. Never knowing if their child was sick or when they were crying, you know, what the issue was, it's difficult for the staff not to be able to have the child make choices and really participate in the classroom. And our staff has been working for a year and a half, trying one strategy after another, having team meetings, trying to find a way to reach this child. But this teacher, she persisted. And when her toolbox didn't work, she started doing some research. So, the teacher and the speech therapist came to me and told me about a workshop that was in Norwood in January and asked if they could go. Well, they went and it's called the LAMP program. It's using a very expensive program on an iPad. Fortunately, I had just written a grant, so I was able to purchase it. They went and they were trained, they bought the program on the iPad, and within two weeks, the student started to respond. For the first time, you know, in a year and a half, she's making choices. She is starting to be able to integrate into the classroom. So, about two weeks ago, you know, we went out to the home, we trained the parents, they have a behavior therapist in the home, so we're training all of the members, you know, in this child's life and it's really making a difference. When I did the teacher's observation, she showed me this lesson and, you know, the student pointed on her iPad that she wanted this item. So, say it was the ball. The teacher gave the child a block. The student got so upset, grabbed the iPad back and started banging on it, ball, ball, ball. She knows what she wants and for the first time in her, in her life, you know, she's able to communicate her wants and needs.
Fantastic.
This, you know, this is what we do. It's not as wild and sexy as the things that happen, you know, at the high schools, but, you know, this is making, this is making a difference in this family's life. And, you know, this is what we do in preschool. You should be very, very proud of the program that, you know, we've built together.
We are, most definitely. The software, do we give that, do we help the parents with getting, getting the same software at home?
What we're doing right now, I'm helping the parent write a grant to get their own. This is the Edwin Phillips Foundation. I'm helping them write that grant so they can get it for the home. But right now, since this is the only voice this child and it's so effective, that iPad with that software is going back and forth, you know, for the meantime.
Perfect. Anybody have any questions for Mary? It's an excellent program. I know, you know, we all experience, we'll be out and about in town and folks will come up and say things to us and not always pleasant. But your program, I get the most positive feedback about. It's just incredible. I think everyone's...
I have friends, I have peers, friends. My kids are young, too, and they're kids that are enrolled. They speak very highly of everything you do.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Very, very positive.
Very good. Thank you. Special Education and Title I Program update. Dr. Rogers.
And I don't think my PowerPoint is going to be nearly as exciting as Mary's or Lee's, but...
Compel that. It's going to be compelling, you see?
Can you sing?
I don't dance, so... Yeah, well, maybe at the gala, but... So, this is my program update for 2017, Special Education Title I. Some of the slides are just a repeat from last year and then some of them have been updated. So, basically, the slide just sort of talks about the scope of my office. It incorporates Title I, Section 504, Special Education, and under Special Education includes in district and out-of-district programming for students preschool to ages 22 years of age. And then it's a list that encompasses all of the related services that we offer throughout the district, occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech and language, behavior, similar list to what Mary had given earlier. This is our special education trends over the last several years. We basically take a snapshot with October 1. This is from our October 1 Sims reports over the last seven or eight years, I think it is up there. Basically, we're trending at about the same. If you look at our total enrollment, we're just under 7,600 and our special education numbers have dropped, but our percentage has not. So, the district is approximately 18%, which is just above the state average. And this is constantly a moving target. We use Title, October 1 is our sort of benchmarker throughout the year, but I just happened to go into Aspen the other day and the numbers have already changed again. So, again, this is just sort of a snapshot in time. These are our special education disability trends and there's a couple left off in the bottom, and this always seems to happen during this presentation, but autism is left off on the bottom. But then I just highlighted our disability trends. Can you see it over there? Oh, you can see it on that one. Okay, sorry.
The screen is down, too.
So, those are our sort of most prevalent disability categories and the disabilities that we're seeing most prevalent in our schools right now. And I think if you remember back to when the building principals gave their updates, you know, they talked a lot about social emotional learning and behavioral health and then we see that in that, in the disability trends as well with regard to the students with emotional disabilities. These are our special education funding sources. We have a local budget. We use our IDA grant. We have a program improvement grant, which is basically professional development. We have our circuit breaker reimbursement funds and then we have a special education revolving account as well. So, what is new for this year? So, this is the year of the audits. We've done a lot of work getting ready for the state, so in the fall, we had to prepare several special education files for a circuit breaker audit and they basically go through all of our financial records to make sure that we are reporting our tuitions correctly and we're getting correct reimbursement amounts back and that we're not overbilling the state or underbilling the state. We had a rethinking discipline audit as well, which we're currently, we submitted our first report and we're going back out to Lemonster at the end of the month to revisit that. But it's basically an initiative through the state to sort of keep kids engaged in school and sort of rethink the way we think about out-of-school suspensions, in-school suspensions, and things like that. We're currently going through our coordinated program review self-study. Those documents are due to the state on May 18. That includes special education, civil rights, English language learners, and our CVET are vocational programming. So, Patty and I have spent a lot of time together lately. She keeps cursing me that she took this job, but... So, we're preparing documents for that and then those will be submitted to the state and then they will be out in the fall to conduct an onsite visit as well. And then we just finished our coordinated program review, which was curriculum, human resources, special education, ELL and CVTE as well. So, and then as Dr. Mastis said, we'll get that report back in about 12 weeks. So, and then hopefully they won't be back for a few more years. So, a couple of other new initiatives that we're sort of embarking on, the Bridge for Resilient Youth and Transition Partnership. It's a partnership with Brookline Mental Health. They're currently in 50 districts across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And again, this is in response to what we're hearing from principals and also what the data trends are showing with the number of students who are in patient hospitalizations and requiring tutoring and then how are we transitioning them back into our larger comprehensive settings? So, again, that's still very new. We've been meeting with them, we've been meeting with the principals of Federal Furnace, PCIS, and Plymouth North High School with regard to how we can support the kids, again, transitioning back from inpatient hospitalizations. Middle School Scheduling Committee, so the middle schools are currently working towards a new schedule, which will hopefully incorporate more time during their day to incorporate regular ed intervention, because we're seeing that as a hurdle, I think, for middle school students as they're making the transition from elementary to middle school. How are we finding time in their day to get regular ed interventions and organization and executive functioning and things like that? So, Dr. Campbell's heading up that committee. And then we're continuing to explore relocating the current ASD program at Federal Furnace Elementary to Indianbrook Elementary. So, we had met on a Saturday, I think it was maybe January, early February, and talked about the possibility of moving that program and sort of why we were thinking about that. So, I just wanted to give the committee an update of sort of where we were at. I did hold a parent meeting. We had two parents, actually three parents attend. Two of the parents were very appreciative of our transparency and didn't have any, any concerns, but just wanted to hear more about it. And we've asked, at this point, teachers to submit a letter for transfer if any of them were interested in doing so. And we're continuing to have those conversations and to ensure that the program maintains its integrity and maintains the supports and services that are currently in place at Federal Furnace. That's kind of an update from our last meeting on that. Title I, for those of you who don't know, Title I provides financial assistance to schools with high percentages of low-income children to ensure that all children meet challenging academic standards. They're allocated through a federal formula and it's based on census estimates that are collected at the state level. Title I funds are supplemental and are used to provide services in addition to what we typically provide. So, our Title I schools are HEDGE, Cold Spring, which are both school-wide programs. Federal Furnace, Manomet, West, and Nathaniel Martin are what we consider targeted assistance. So, the, they use data to determine which students are receiving services and who are not, whereas HEDGE at Cold Spring, there's a little more flexibility for how the funds can be used. So, as far as Title I, the grant pays for 16 Title I teachers and one instructional coach. This year, we've incorporated additional behavioral support, so we've hired a BCBA that goes between Cold Spring and HEDGE and also a school adjustment counselor. counselor. It provides professional oper, uh, professional development opportunities for teachers. It provides a comprehensive summer program. It provides transportation for students to get to and from either, um, before school or after school tutoring and also for enrichment activities as well, supplies and materials. And, um, a big piece of Title I is family and community engagement. So there are gonna be some changes in Title I this year. The federal formula, which is used to calculate Title I, is changing and may affect our Title I funds. We're thinking that this year, Federal Furnace, although they have qualified in the past, will continue to qualify, um, and we're thinking about, um, making that a school-wide effort, um, which would allow more flexibility with regard to Title I programming. We have added a part-time family engagement liaison to help with our ELL families, um, and that's been paid through, through the Title I grant. Um, and then one of our bigger initiatives right now are the Power Scholars, the Power Scholars Academy, which is a partnership with the Old Colony Y, and it will afford us the opportunity to provide a six-week, five-day summer program for, um, our students that come from disadvantaged families. And it'll be academics in the morning and then enrichment, um, leisure and recreation in the afternoon. So our ongoing district-wide initiatives, um, we're continuing to work on our, um, tiered system of supports through PBIS and response to intervention, a redesign to the middle school schedule, co-teaching and inclusive practices. Um, Dr. Lisa Decker has been working with us over the last couple of years and we've just confirmed her for our full day in service in October, so we're very excited about that. The Bridge for Youth in Transition Program, um, preparing for coordinated, uh, the Desi Fall Visit and to continue to provide, um, quality coordinated professional development for our teachers. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments? Very good. You have a lot on your plate there. Thank you.
Can I just ask one?
Yes, please.
You had mentioned on, on the top three, that one of them was health?
Behavioral health, yep.
Oh, it's behavioral health?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause it just said health, so...
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That's all I need to know.
Very good. Thank you, both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have an update on our solar energy project proposal and an action for show, uh, vote of support. Do I need the... Mr. Costin?
You can sing and dance.
He's a showman, he...
He's a showman, yeah.
So I'll give a preview of this and then, uh, I can turn it over to Mr. Costin. Uh, he's getting acclimated to the remote there. Um, I think many of you have, um, been in tune with what we're doing regarding the lights at Plymouth South High School. And these are lights for the fields B and C, uh, the fields that we were referencing in the video earlier. One of the dilemmas that we have is the entire, uh, price package for the lights and turf was $4.1 million and that was the entire package to finish up the, uh, Plymouth South High School project. What we were able to do is put together a program that would be able to take the million dollars of cost for the lights and build those into a solar project that would actually, with power generation, um, would actually pay for the lights as part of the package. So, uh, Mr. Costin has been working with, uh, Bob Patterson. Uh, you will recall, Mr. Patterson, uh, came before us probably seven or eight years ago when we were really rolling out our first solar, um, farm project. And, uh, Bob is a consultant who, um, is in tune with what's happening nationally, uh, in terms of solar, um, voltaic and battery stored, um, you know, distribution of, of electricity. So we had a conference call last week and the presentation that you'll hear tonight is the genesis of that conversation and, which is really gonna lead to the RFP that will go out for, uh, this project. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Costin and he can just walk through this, uh, presentation.
Thank you very much. And this is battery operated, right? So...
It's not solar.
Wow. I figured it out.
Not yet.
Um, so thank you very much. Um, we, um, as you know, um, we've done a lot of solar here and, and Bob has put that together and this presentation really was made, uh, kind of summarizing where we are and some of our goals in the district. As we all know, we're 100% solar. We, we've been saving about a million dollars every year in, in, uh, cost savings and, uh, we, we continue to look at ways to increase energy efficiency. We're looking at conversions to LED lights, uh, we're looking at, uh, other ways to do, expand renewable energy uses and we're looking at new energy technologies. And as you know, it's kind of the stars align, I was gonna say the sun aligned, but the stars aligned and we have a new opportunity here and battery technology is, is now the, the newest opportunity that we'll have. So it kind of came together when we'd started discussing about possibilities for putting together a project for lights and solar for, uh, New South High School. So given, uh, given, I think, the expertise among the committee with the experience of all the solar that we've done, we've kind of made some very short bullet points to go over the, uh, the real basics of this project, the meat of the project. So what our plan is that, uh, we will put rooftop solar arrays on South High School. Approximately, we're figuring about 900, uh, solar arrays and, um, about 2,100 carport arrays, which are 700 kilowatt hours at New South and, and the middle school parking lots. And, uh, I have some photos, a photo here of rendering, which I can show you in a moment. What we've done is, uh, as part of the project, the contractor has put in conduit, so it'll already be placed in the islands behind, uh, for the parking area behind, is that the faculty parking area? Or the faculty park or kids, behind the building. So when you drive through the building, you will not see the, the carport arrays, they'll be behind the building. Uh, when you drive around the building, you'll see them. So all the conduit will be put in there. So after, obviously we're putting in all-new pavement, it won't have to be, uh, disturbed. At the same time, we're putting a conduit in that will go to the south middle, to the property line, because we feel we'll probably need to go to south middle for, um, for some additional carport parking, uh, to, to obtain our, our, our desired output. We're also looking at putting in 14, um, high-efficiency LED lights for the, the new fields, uh, the B and C fields, the, the seven acres of, of fields that we're, we're gonna be putting out there. And really, this is the new part. This is a 500 KW of electric storage, uh, renewable electricity. These are the, the batteries. It's our intention to, to place this into, um, a pad on the outside of the building. These are the, the newest technology. They're very common in California and they're now becoming common in Massachusetts. Uh, they're introducing them in, in many areas and I know they're gonna be marketing and they're looking ultimately to go to utilities, to, to be able to have utilities use them. So I have a few pictures here. This is an actual, uh, drawing of, of Lincoln Sudbury High School. They put in a 3,600 panel, um, system that actually became operational in, uh, September 2015. This would be something that, uh, this would be very similar to what we would probably look at. Uh, we would, they're very, they're higher than they look in, in, in this rendering, but we would also put lighting underneath and we would put, uh, security cameras underneath.
All powered by the arrays?
All powered by, by the arrays. This is, uh, just a representation of what a 500 KW storage, um, battery storage unit, e-storage unit would look like. And again, we would put that on the outside, near the electric room behind, uh, New South High School. And again, rooftop panels, we're looking at, um, actually the next generation of rooftop panels, which are, uh, very high efficiency, much more higher, much higher efficiency than what we currently have, but they're also a lot lighter. Uh, they're about, uh, half, half the weight of, of the, uh, existing panels that we have on, on other, on South High, on North High, excuse me. So our primarily, you know, the, the design of that building, there's a lot of rooftop equipment and there's a lot of, um, screens that hide that equipment. The, the areas in that limited, really what we'd probably be able to put on that building will be in the gymnasium, the performing arts center, uh, in the cafeteria roofs, which have the wide open areas. And again, high, high efficiency LED sports lighting, uh, which will be on 14 poles and it'll be 1,500 watt fixtures. Now the concrete bases will be, are already being installed as part of the building project, so, um, and, and this would not be able to take place, the installation of lights until after the fields are done. So that would probably be 2018. So the benefits to this project, um, number one is that we will, we will require 2.2 million kilowatt hours to run New South High School. We will generate 50% of that, uh, with our onsite solar. And again, those will be the, the solar arrays on the roof and in the parking area. The new, the new part is the, uh, renewable, like, electricity storage. What this really will do is the, the, the solar power will, and along with the grid, both, will charge, um, this battery unit, for lack of better terms, it's a large battery unit. And the, there's a computer program which will be able to schedule to release that energy so it will, um, at times when we have our high demand charges. So what it does, I don't know if all of you are probably aware, that we pay, as, as a commercial user, we pay for a capacity that we have to have locked in, so that the utility has that available for us. And, um, that usually occurs during, they, they measure our, our demand storage in a lot of cases during the summer when there's air conditioning going and, and there's high usage. Now for a school, it'd probably be a different time they would measure it. But the battery will release electricity, so it, the goal is to, as opposed to say, look at our u- usage like a heartbeat, is to keep it, so to speak, flatlined as much as possible. So that limits our costs, um, and it's, it will save us a, a great deal of money. And also the high-efficiency LED storage, uh, I'm sorry, system lighting. The neat thing about doing it this way as, as a project, the, the developer will, we believe, be able to take advantage of, um, wrapping it into the project. They'll be able to take advantage of depreciation. They'll be able to sell that as part of a solar project. They'll be able to sell a 30%, uh, they'll get investment tax credit. So if you look at it that way, a million dollar project could be reduced by half. And that's what we would have to pay. And the revenue stream for the developer would be over 10 years and we would own, we would, we would own that project, uh, the lights after 10 years. They would be turned over to us for a dollar. Now how do we pay for those? We pay for those through the savings from what we're paying to the utility, not only for the electric, the electricity per kilowatt hour, but also for the reduction in demand charges and what's called the ICAP charge, which is also another set aside that the utility requires us to have. So that will, in our estimation and Bob's numbers, will, will really pay for the lighting, no cost, to the school district or the town. And there's also another side benefit, that the more that we generate onsite, we will have more electricity from our solar projects to offer to the town. So the town will end up saving additional money also, be able to give them more offload, so to speak, more, uh, solar energy. So where do we go from here? Um, if the school committee votes tonight, um, in the affirmative, we will draft the RFP, um, and we'll release the project and we'll, we'll get going on it. I mean, you're, you're all aware of the way that, uh, this, this goes. We'll set a schedule and in some cases it may take longer. Um, and usually what takes longer is the, the review of the power purchase agreement. It'd be the same process as before. Um, we're hopeful that we can get this project proposals due by around May 20th and that we could have an award by the 1st of June. And, um, project to be start, start, um, construction work over the summer. Panels are not as rare as they were when we first started. I'm, and if you remember, we were waiting and waiting for panels and things have really changed. So, uh, we're hopeful that we can have this, part one of this project completed by, uh, September. And that would be the batteries. And so we would be saving right away, having the batteries and the photovoltaic. The lights cannot be installed till the fields are completed. The conduit has to be run, et cetera, so...
All the preliminary work can be done.
Correct.
Excellent. Anybody have questions? This is a really cool effort and, um, the, the part that I think, um, might have missed, uh, when we first started talking about this was not only are we covering the lights, 'cause that's the thing everyone's focused on right now with the field, the turf and the lights, but we're covering 50% of the electrical needs of that new building.
Yeah.
Which is allowing, since we're already at zero for generation, it's giving us more credits and that's why we can make a deal like this with a developer where we don't lay out any money. There's, there's no upfront cost to us or anything for this. Everything is off the credits and the selling of the credits and stuff. Uh, let's make sure that there's no more discussion. Any other questions? Yeah?
Um, I understand, um, putting the solar panels on the roof, but now we're going to put solar panels, uh, where the public has access to. Cars will go underneath, people will walk underneath. Is there any extra permitting or town board approvals that we need since this is gonna be on, on the ground and above cars?
It's already in the...
It's not considered a ground mount?
In the new bylaw, in the new solar bylaw, it's already in there for, uh, for, for the ground mounted, uh...
He's on ground now.
I mean, the cap, yeah.
The, uh, solar arrays on carports...
On cap, yeah.
Do qualify under the new bylaw, so it does not count as, uh, being on land.
No.
So it, it, from my understanding, it, it, our bylaw is, uh, in line with what we are proposing.
Yes, it is.
I think the bigger issue too with the bylaw was the cutting down of trees and clearing lands, so this is...
Yeah, that was different. So this, this was already in it and so that, that even malls can put a cap woods up if they wish to on their parking lot. Yeah.
In fact, for Article 30, there's actually a handout that they're providing where they're actually saying solar panels placed on already suitable rooftops can provide 45, 50% of mass energy. And then there's the parking lots. And they show a picture of what we just saw in the, from Sudbury.
That's a negative.
No, my point is they're selling it because what they're saying is that's an attractive alternative that they're looking for. So we're not setting aside new property, we're using the parking lots. We have these vast parking lots and we're utilizing the parking lots in a more creative way, generating the energy and not cutting down one tree to do it. Ms. Badger?
I just have a really quick question. So you said that the, the lights cannot be installed till after the field's done, obviously. Does, does that mean we'll have any problems with like, starting the fall season for 2018 or will that all be all set?
The, the project, uh, timeline is September 2018. Uh, the tail end of, um, the installation will be the lights. So the contractor has a responsibility to turn over the entire project to September 2018. It actually should be in August.
Okay, okay.
Okay? So that means the lights is, it's on schedule because the lights are included in the entire package for turnover. So...
Okay.
Once, um, September 2018 rolls around, uh, school starts, kids on fields, it should be ready to go. Uh, and just one other point that Gary and I were talking about this, um, last week. Once the solar, um, arrays are, are installed and the batteries are active and the system becomes live, that energy can be used even though the solar, even though the lights aren't, aren't installed. We can start using that, that power the minute that field is ready to go. We can assign those, um, uh, kilowatts to whatever faction we want, whether it be the field lights at night to, to set, you know, accommodate for that, whether it's to peak demand times that we wanna assign it to that so we can, we can minimize our costs. But our goal is to use it, use the technology behind, um, the system to be able to maximize our efficiencies, to save money just by how we operate it. And I think that's, that's the beauty of, of tweaking the system to benefit the technology.
Mr. Costin?
Yeah, sorry. I, I did forget to mention, I'm so excited about this that I forgot to mention, um, that we, um, as, as soon as we're given the green light, we will, um, submit to the DOER for, for inclusion in any grants that are available. And there are grants out there. This is very attractive, uh, for funding. Uh, the DOER is very interested in promoting battery technology.
The DOER is very interested in promoting battery technology. And again, this would be really one of the first installations in Massachusetts for a school, so.
And I'll just, to follow up on that then, when we met with Mr. Patterson on Tuesday, sorry, did I step on you?
No, no, go ahead.
When we met with him on, on Tuesday, he was pointing out to us all about the battery technology and, oh, I was getting so charged up on the battery, pardon the pun, technology. But his recommendation is that we don't, that's why in the picture he shows it as an outdoor storage. His recommendation was not to put it inside yet, he's not sure if the technology's there yet. Much better to have it outside and it's easily accessible and, and can expand easier if we want to add more or whatever, if, if actually the provider wants to add more because we don't have anything to do with the equipment. But, so just, if everyone was thinking, oh, I thought this was going to be downstairs, no, it's going to be outside.
I can kind of parlay that into my question, is, does the provider cover the maintenance, the insurance on these things if something breaks in clement weather?
Yeah.
Or these arrays falls on a car, they pay for it?
It's.
Until we own it, essentially.
Correct. It's similar, it's similar to North with the exception of the arrays on the, on the parking lot, which they would be responsible for. They have to submit to us a certificate of insurance and we'll, we'll keep that on file every year updated.
Just to follow up to that, it's incumbent on the contractor, the owner of the, of the project, to get this thing as efficient as possible because they're losing money if something's broken. So it is, it is their, in their best interest, in our best interest to get this, if something breaks, they need to get there quickly and get it repaired because we're losing, they're losing. So that's a motivating factor for them. So I think it's pretty interesting how we can pay off the lights in ten years, which is, at the end of ten years, it's going to generate even more savings for us. So I think it'll be a win-win down the road, too.
While the provider owns the contract, will they, besides the service, if there's any updates or as the technology grows, will they consistently manage that effort again until we own it? Is that?
I would say, I can't speak for, maybe Gary can answer that.
I think you're, you're probably referring to the computer software that manages the system, the battery system. That will be put in the RFP, the updates will be included as part of their obligation.
Dr. Sorenz? Is the size of the battery determined by how much energy we can get from the panels versus the size of the battery determined by how much energy we need to run the lights?
Good question.
It's going to be fifty percent of the entire building's use, not just the lights. So it's fifty percent of the entire building's use.
Battery?
I'm talking about the battery.
To be stored.
So the, the battery, this is, this is my understanding of how the technology works. We would size the battery based on the monokilowatts that we're generating on the solar panels. So that, that, so when we have, let's say we will estimate that on a peak period of time, that we're going to generate X amount of kilowatts and, and the battery would have to be sized appropriately. And I'm sure there'll be a tolerance of, you know, plus for capacity purposes, but it, it is definitely going to be sized, oversized, not hugely oversized, but in, for the emergency purposes.
Precisely why I asked the question. And there's only one, there's only one sort of concrete pad? There's two of them?
There's one pad with two, with two units. And one inverter because it goes from, solar power is generated through direct current. We convert it from direct current to alternating current, which then gets applied to the grid.
Okay.
And it'll depend on which.
Are any other questions? If not, then I would ask for a motion.
And I'll move that the solar energy project be approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Burgess moves it. Do I have a second? Ms. Hunt seconds it. Any further discussion? Then let's vote on that one.
Where is it?
Might have to sink.
Yes. So we'll bring that back.
So, Mr. Chairman, the, once, once we receive an RFP, we will, I mean, once we draft the RFP, we'll, we'll bring that back.
Share it back.
Share it back.
Perfect. Very good, it's unanimous. Excellent. Thank you. I don't know about anybody else, but I, I'm really excited about this because we've been telling the public that we're always looking for, you know, bleeding edge technology and everything to, this, this one, we're actually using that building to generate, we're going, we're already at zero, so everything is gravy now, so.
Yep.
We can start paying down not just the generation charges, but the delivery charges.
Demand side and the supply side.
Oh, it's exciting, isn't it? To be off the grid.
It is very exciting.
And we get to share with the town, help, help the town situation a little bit, too.
It's all good stuff.
Okay. The only bad part of this whole thing is we have to listen to some strained sun puns for the next year.
Oh, he missed those.
But I'm sure there'll be new ones.
I hope they expand to like battery, like.
I can't resist because I'm going to Alaska in two weeks, see my new granddaughter, and I'm going to go visit the Alaskan bush people, so they're off the grid, too.
They're off the grid.
We can be the Plymouth bush people.
You're going to recharge your batteries?
Yes.
Moving on. Reports and proposals from committee members. Anybody? Very good. Ms. Hunt?
Just a couple things. I know I missed the last regular meeting because I, I went to Washington DC again. Seems like I've been there twice in a month, but I, this time I attended the National PTA Legislative Conference and I'm very proud to say that Plymouth North sophomore Marley Hunt accompanied me, she actually represented Massachusetts as the co-chair of the Youth Committee for Massachusetts PTA. And I was very, very proud of her. Some of the things that we did there, you know, again, we talked about a lot of the issues coming up, funding, serving underserved youth. We talked a lot about the Healthy Hunger-Free Schools Act, which is up for reauthorization as well as the Juvenile Justice System, which both, I, I know I say this all the time, but the Juvenile Justice System was actually created by the PTA, which a lot of people don't realize, as well as hot meals in schools. So a hundred and twenty years later, National PTA is still in DC working on those issues, which I think is pretty impressive. I actually sat on a panel, for a panel discussion, about underserved youth. And joining me on that panel was a, somebody from the immigrant population. School counselors were represented, foster parents and youth. And there was also, well, I actually spoke about LGBTQ youth because the Massachusetts PTA has done a lot of work on that. And I will be honest and I'll tell you that I talked to Dr. Myassis a little bit before going there, because they wanted my feedback, not only as a PTA leader, but also as a school committee member. They asked about that specifically in the questions and, you know, I think for us, a lot of what we do around that is kind of a no-brainer, non-issue, but when you talk to people from around the country, we're very unique and very, very different when it comes to, to helping our LGBTQ youth. Even the fact that we have stickers on all of our doors that say it's a safe zone, that's unheard of in a lot of states and a lot of districts. So after I spoke, the woman from the School Counselors Association actually announced to everybody that she wishes that she could clone us, which was kind of neat to hear. And the woman from the US Department of Ed that spoke with me actually kept a copy of Dr. Myassis's Voyager magazine and she was really impressed with what we had to say. So that was kind of a proud moment for us, talking about Plymouth in that situation.
Getting the word out.
Yeah, absolutely. And then the last day we spent, the day we actually met with Representative Keating and he basically didn't want to talk to me because the kids were there. So he talked to the kids and he really enjoyed hearing about Plymouth and talking about Plymouth. And he told us how excited he is for the new school to be built and everything that we're doing here. So we had a good, we had a good week. Then last weekend was the Massachusetts PTA Annual Meeting and I'm bringing that up because I wanted to congratulate Michelle Mott, who is a parent from Nathaniel Morton, and she actually was awarded the Spirit of PTA Award. So she was recognized this weekend.
Great.
We were at UMass Lowell and she was there with us and she was recognized as a, as an outstanding PTA leader. So I just wanted to mention that.
Very good.
And that's it.
Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Badger, you had something?
I just have two quick things. The Alumni Association is our meeting and it'll be on Thursday at six in the, the RE/MAX at the Bennys Plaza. Someday I'll learn the name of that plaza. And then the other thing is the PMC Kids Ride is set again for this year, for its fifth year in Plymouth, and it's going to be June twenty-fifth. And this year we have our first five-mile loop, so for our older students. So really excited and hoping for.
Could use that, yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of kids want to continue.
Go around and around and around, like seven or eight times. So it's better that we have a longer track for them. So we just need more volunteers to make sure it's a successful event and safe, because it's in the forest.
You could get lost.
Yeah.
And nobody mentioned that you went to the.
The Honors?
Be honest.
Honor Society.
Yes. So while you were doing that, I was doing this. And I went to the youth reception at the Center for the Arts on Nostory, so.
Very good.
We split up, I saw you in there, I think you did both.
Well done, it was well done. Yeah.
It was very well done and all of our schools participate in that, and all the art teachers, it was such a list of art teachers that are involved. It was very good.
So proud, they're very proud.
Student musicians, I forgot, they provided background music. And the Golden Gull Studios helped with the yacht mounting. And so it takes a lot of work for everybody and of course the Plymouth Center for the Art donating the space isn't bad either. So it's a very good function.
Very good.
Yeah.
Very good. And we talked about a lot of our other things already. I just want to reiterate that we're all supporting the caucuses.
Oh, that's right.
And so we did two today already, right? So the next one is going to be on the twenty-second, I think. Yes, twenty-second, right? So on, Wednesday's is the motions, actually.
Yeah, Wednesday, I have, in the morning I have the town meeting preview at eight AM and then we have Thursday night. Thursday night we have the, excuse me, we have motions on Wednesday.
Wednesday, the twenty-second.
And then.
Preview on Thursday.
Yeah, I had that mixed up. But I will be at both of those. Gary, I think comes along with me, so he, he has the choice sometimes.
Motions I won't be able to attend because that's eight in the morning, but.
Yeah, don't, don't worry about that.
Just tell Steve that I will be speaking, because he asks that question every, every year.
Yes.
Do I have any, what? Uh, we have a few, like Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, which is precinct eight, we don't have anybody down for that. I can probably try to fill in wherever. Will you be available?
I'm in DC twenty-eight, twenty-nine and I think I'm going to be home on the thirtieth. I may be able to do the one.
A consultant, like Uber driver.
Is it twenty-eighth, that's next Tuesday?
Yeah.
Am I be able to do it?
If we could just, if you see, if you see the ones where there's question marks and you find that you're going to be available, just like, just text me or something, let me know that we have coverage there, that'd be great.
Let Nancy know.
We have the chart.
Where is the one on the twenty-eighth?
Well, that one we just talked about was the twentieth at the Cedarville Community Room, which is why I think I might be able to get a ride to there. But we'll stay on top of that. The main takeaway is we want to make sure you guys are going to be there, we'll make sure you have some support.
We are, we have everyone covered, so if we have, if we're double booked, somebody will be at one or the other, so we, we're good to go, just like tonight, we had.
And we have a talking point sheet? Did everybody get a copy of that? Did everybody get a copy of the talking point sheet?
I will forward one to you tomorrow. What I will do is send you, I prepared, Gary Kasten and I prepared a, a sheet that we're using to kind of guide these precinct meetings. And we'll get, we'll email it to you. You can have a copy of that.
Just in case.
Yeah. I gave it to you when you went to the last one and I only have two copies.
If we do nothing with it, except for people who ask us questions, we'll, we have it.
Well, we have brochures, too.
I know we have those.
So it's basically what's, what the talking points have to say is just for the presenter, so we don't have to, it's succinct.
Yeah, it's just good in case you get stuck in traffic or something and, and the meeting starts. It's just good to have that.
You'll, you'll have, you'll have my talking points.
Everybody has it in their back pocket.
Yeah, I made a couple of changes tonight, too, so I'll add those. The, I got the actual dollar amount reimbursables for South.
Good.
Oh, that's good.
So you'll have those exact dollar amounts. So, yeah, that's, those are good numbers to have.
I think it's important to keep saying the actual amount of money that we're bonding, which is not a hundred and ninety-nine million.
No, not even close.
Which is, I think, very important.
Yeah.
Free school. Anyone get one free?
PYDC reports.
The meeting, the, the meeting notes are now a thing of February seventeen and it was postponed from snow on the tenth. But I think that last, a week ago Monday, we did that, didn't we? Mr. Campbell?
I'm sorry.
We did that meeting.
PYDC.
PYDC meeting. These minutes are like a month behind.
Right, we do not have the minutes from the last month. We did successfully complete the Drug-Free Community Grant, so in terms of an update.
Since, since this.
Since our last meeting, yes. And I think I mentioned that at the last update that we gave here.
We postponed one, too.
We had postponed one as well.
There's a postponement.
We've had a couple of weather-related postponements and delays, so.
Yeah, because there was another meeting that was supposed to be on March ninth, or no, March, no, no, was it?
The last meeting that was scheduled was, has been postponed.
It was postponed and it's going to be.
April.
This Sunday.
Thirty-fourth, at the end of the month. It's the last Friday of.
Last Friday of.
Okay, and we'll be, and I'll be away, so you'll, you'll, you'll be covering.
Yes, the last meeting is on.
I'll try.
The next meeting is March thirty-first.
He's always, we always have it covered.
We're always there.
We're just there as a courtesy.
We're always there.
It's just that the minutes are way, we can't use the minutes because they're like, they're always a month late.
Sure. So we haven't had a meeting because of delays and weather-related events.
Delays and snow, twice now, so.
But in the meantime, we've been working on, we had a deadline of March fifteenth for the Drug-Free Community Grant, that federal grant. There's a lot of echo back here. I don't, I don't project that much either. So we, we have successfully completed that application. It was an extensive process that also included the collaboration of the District Attorney's Office, I want to thank them publicly for their support, it was instrumental in that process. We won't hear whether or not we were successful until sometime this summer, but hopefully if we are awarded that grant, which I'd say one out of ten may receive funding, but if we do receive funding, if fortunate enough, we'll receive several hundred thousand dollars over the next five years to support our efforts towards drug education prevention.
Good.
Yeah.
The initiatives that PYDC is all about.
Sure. Very good.
And they're doing a lot of work with the marketing in our schools, so the kids are very involved.
Yes, and we've got a lot of, yeah, a lot of work through our partnership with the South, with the, with our regional coalition as well, for sure.
Very good. Excellent. Building committee.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, hold up, hold up.
I was just going to say, what time is the meeting usually? Because.
Eight o'clock.
Okay, I could, I might be able to do it, depending on.
Eight to nine thirty.
Because I will just, I'll work late the night before, so I might be able to do it if, just so let me know.
It's eight to nine thirty.
Eight to nine.
I had to delegate that because I can't get there.
No, I was just saying I might be able to cover it, so.
Perfect, thank you.
I will know, too.
That was an interesting factor that came up, that Plymouth is a port of entry for customs. I didn't know that, did you, on that?
No.
No, I try, I was really surprised about that. They're talking about the new marine facility and. And so, the, this is a $600,000 boating infrastructure grant. And they're getting, they're working on a lot and, and port security. And it's, it's going to be, so, it'll be all-inclusive with this maritime facility that they're building at the Town Wharf. And.
And that's going to be under the Building Committee?
Oh, yeah, anything that's built, any building that's built.
I didn't realize there was that big of a building associated with it.
Even if it's a little building, like, like the bathrooms at White Horse Beach. We even have that, I'm just, it's anything that's.
Yeah, I think it's a dollar amount, though, unless invited to manage it, I believe. But it, it doesn't matter.
Oh, we have not heard that on the Building Committee.
Okay.
We have all buildings, that's all I know. And anyway, so they said that they need a corner for the simulator and that it should be available on the spring of 2018. It'll be 2.89 million dollars. And they're going to have this ship called Mars. It's a solar diesel sailboat that's going to go from Plymouth to Plymouth. I don't know which way it's going to go first, they haven't really worked it all out. But anyway, it's going to go from Plymouth to Plymouth.
Plymouth, England here.
Solar diesel?
From there to here.
From there to here?
Yes.
Okay, so, so anyway.
This particular Mars vehicle is an unmanned drone, boat drone. It's going to be used all over the world and all of the oceans. One of the tasks it will do will be to, to do the Mayflower Run.
Yeah.
And, and there are several ports that will have to have computer rooms and will, will be one of them. There'll be one down in Florida and one in Europe, I think.
And so, and it's, it's a research-type facility and it's 90 feet long. So, just to let you know. And on the Russell Street Packing Deck, the bids now are out, so we're just waiting for them to come in.
They'll be back on March 30th.
Yeah, so it's coming. Newtown Hall. They're still wanting to know what we're doing. Anyway, the Newtown Hall is 77% complete. And you went on the tour. You want to talk about?
No.
Nothing special, okay. And on the Sims House, you went on that tour, too, did you?
No, I didn't make it.
Oh, I didn't make it either, okay. So.
70%.
Anyway, it'll be, it'll be ready, it's 70% done. They're blueboarding it now, it should be done by the end of June. So, that project is almost complete. It's really coming along. And, let's see, Plymouth South High School. Agostini's pushing to get the doors on the technology piece done. May 12th will be substantial completion. Furniture will be coming in in May 15. No one will be in, in the building. We'll take ownership of, I guess, 7-1. And the fire pump will be installed on 6-19, once the school is out. And it takes 10 days to install that. Other project out, update is, they're going to have, we're going to have someone in about the salt shed in Cedarville. Dennis Wood will be coming in on the, our next meeting. They're working on the bid for Mount Pleasant School, they're working on that right now. The Plymouth Fire Station, they're going to be passing on the property on 4-6. So, that's coming along. And. Yeah, and I have a recommended capital improvement project. It says roof and repairs are not recommended by Capital O'Leary. So, and that was for Weston, Yeneybrook, was it? I don't, but anyway, on two of the schools. And it wasn't recommended. And the next meeting will be April 13th.
Very good. Very good. That brings us to the Accounts Payable Warrant, Ms. Badger.
Where school committee members have been provided with a copy of the Cost and Transfer and Transaction Summary Report and warrant for review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the Reports and Accounts Payable Warrant S032317 dated March 23rd, 2017 in the amount of $838,883.06 as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Ms. Hunt seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please vote. I almost said the other, but I caught myself. Very good, unanimous. So, now we have a series of minutes to review. And we're starting with February 4th.
I will move the minutes be approved as presented.
And seconded by Mrs. Burgess. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Please vote.
Oh, I didn't. Please vote, action.
All right, the next one was an executive session on the 4th, same, same day.
Yeah, okay.
You all set?
I will move as presented.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please vote.
I don't, mine says under discussion.
Nope, now it is.
There it goes.
Now we have February 6th. Ms. Badger.
I move we approve the February 6th minutes, minutes as presented.
Seconded, Ms. Truselli. That was still on it?
No.
Yeah, you'll get it.
Truselli, Truselli.
You like that S.
I, I have nightmares about this.
Trishell, like, like, like Shelley.
Shelley.
Just don't call me that, I like my name.
So close, you're getting there.
I'm sorry.
I don't care.
Any further discussion?
It's my marriage, David.
Okay, then please vote. Got thrown off there.
You try it again.
27th now, February 27th.
I'll move it.
Ms. Badger got ahead of you. She moved it and Mrs. Burgess seconds it.
I won't have any trouble with it.
And any further discussion? Then please vote.
Now I'm the late one.
It's okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Without objection.
That's fast.
We're good?
It's like 8:30. 8:38.
8:37.
iPhone's right.
Okay. So, without objection, then, that was, that was a pretty fast schedule. Covered a lot of ground, too.
We did.
Then we're adjourned at 8, 8:38.